I heard you.
No, no.
It's going to be at your church, right?
No, Waterfront Park.
Waterfront Park.
I just wanted to make sure. You should get a flyer tonight if we had enough. I'd give you the...I think I gave them all out.
I just wanted to make sure I have the right location.
Yeah, Waterfront.
As a reminder.
Backpack giveaway.
Backpack giveaway.
Oh.
Give back.
Oh. That's nice. Those are nice.
Yeah, we try.
They have it up in Ocala. It's called Stuff the Bus. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be sharing if you've got anything I can get you more information. I'll be sharing the information again to the public.
Oh, okay.
And Linda's got a flyer. She's going to be trying to get the word out.
Call Jordan for the city council meeting Tuesday, July 13, 2021.
Councilwoman Sorrell, James Matthew for the record, city attorney. The mayor and vice mayor may be calling in, but they're not on the line now pursuant to section 2-71. When the presiding officer, the mayor, is not here, his role is to be taken over by the vice mayor. He's not here, and that it specifically states that the most senior member of the city council will temporarily chair the meeting. Even if they appear by phone, I don't consider that meeting the quorum requirements, which we do have a quorum, so you'll chair the meeting. Okay? That's for the public's benefit. So you can proceed with the invocation.
Please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all. Lord, we do want to thank you for our city. Lord, we do just pray for favor on the waterfront overlay and with all of the businesses there, Lord. We thank you for wisdom on how to just give back some of the use in Nick's Park to keep it up for particularly those not in the city. And, Lord, we do thank you for every staff and our employees. We do pray for Veronica and her back today. We just pray, Lord, for strength and healing there and provision for the families. And, Lord, we just continue to ask you to protect our fire department, police department. Lord, we just pray that then their families would have your protection around them. Lord, we do continue to pray for the budget, for the preparation and the setting in order for what needs to function. And, Lord, tonight, we pray for the council and just the growing of unity and respect for one another in our city and just the wisdom to make decisions tonight. And we just ask you to help us, Lord. We humble ourselves and say, "May your goodness flow to this city through these making decisions in Jesus' name."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Scott Tremblay. Let the record show that Mayor Scott Tremblay is not present for tonight's meeting. Vice Mayor William Ditmer. Let the record show that Vice Mayor Ditmer is not present for tonight's meeting. Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell.
Here.
Councilman Todd McClary.
Here.
Councilman Tom Kinsella.
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew.
Here.
City Manager John Duke.
We need a motion to approve council minutes.
Motion to approve council minutes.
Second.
All in favor, by the way?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay. We have comments from the general public. I have Ms. Susan Sullivan.
Yes.
Sullivan. Sorry.
Susan Sullivan, 8721 Old Post Road. A couple of things I would like to ask. If the first traffic study on Old Post Road has been completed? And if it has, if I could get a copy of it? And then it looks like you're doing a second traffic study? And if so, how long is that going to be out there? So we can see what the comparison is between the two. The other thing is, the police, do they patrol at night on Old Post Road? There's quite a few speeders at night. And is there a noise ordinance for the city? And if there is, is there any way we can get signs made to put them up? You know, maybe near Avila Bay or on Old Post? The noise is 24/7 coming from the cars. And we have...it doesn't matter if the windows are closed or open, they are just booming Mr. Ditmer told us that there was going to be cameras and signs posted at Brasher Park. If there are, when are they going to be put in? Because there's some mischief down at Brasher Park that we see, because we ride our bikes every day. We ride the neighborhood every day, five to seven miles, and we do the loop in the back neighborhood and everything. So we've seen some mischief going on down there. And we did see one of your police officers down there the other day, which was, "Thank you." And then we want to know if Old Post is going to be paved. We were informed by some of your people that are no longer with the city that it will be paved after the construction is complete in Avila Bay. So I wonder if that's going to happen. So they've torn up that street, Old Post, quite a bit, those trucks. So those are my questions. Thank you so much.
Pastor Lord.
Yes, ma'am. I do want to thank all of you that are helping with the backpack and even giving donations. Some of the businesses have. We appreciate that. We just are excited to bless the city. And I do want to thank the city for the brush pickup. What a blessing it's been. It's getting cleaned up pretty good. I've got the old big stump I'm starting to cut up and get rid of, but thank you all so much for the blessing it is to be in the city. First of all, most of you have an update on the backpack giveaway flyer there, I believe, got to you. I'm sorry, I thought I had more of those. And of course, the backpack giveaway, you are invited to our fellowship hall Wednesday night, the 21st, at 6:00. We'll be stuffing those, and if there's anything the police department, fire department, or anything wanted to put in that the citizens need to know, they'll be stuffed in there. We've worked with the sheriff department, put all the human trafficking information and gun safety, so that's available, that we would be putting information in that forum. So we would be glad if you get that to us by the 21st. We'll put that in each backpack. And anything from the city manager, from the city, that you would like to share to those we give them to, we'd be glad to help you out with that. And then, of course, the 24th, I want to thank the city manager and the being able to get the permit, so things seems to be going good in volunteer way for all their provisions. Now, last week, I had given a release form about the Cure Fest. And yes, the Cure Fest is our event, but you should have a flyer to give you a little background. The...what I gave last week, the release form, was put together by the city of St. Pete. So if you have this with you, it has all the information. If you see, Cure Fest is a community outreach service program. It's a beautiful day in your neighborhood. Yes, I'm your neighbor. Build unity in your community. For over 20 years, Somebody Cares Tampa Bay has mobilized local ministries, communities, agencies, and businesses to meet practical needs of our communities through Cure Fest. The object of Cure Fest is to literally do all the good we can by the means we can. So each year, Somebody Cares Tampa Bay sponsors Cure Fest Day, a workday in which thousands of volunteers in different locations through our service area come together to beautify and repair homes and neighborhoods. These projects are identified through local government offices, ministries, civic groups. At the end of the day, the volunteers and the homeowners come together to recognize and celebrate their accomplishments. We usually meet about 8:30. I think we've had the center of it at Waterfront Park at least two, maybe three, times where we would meet there, get things together and send out in the city, and then come back and work on Waterfront Park. We used to keep that up. We also did it at the pier. And so food and beverages are provided, and the celebration also provides opportunities for volunteers to meaningfully connect with people in need in our community. However, the Cure Fest program is a year-round program, so volunteers can participate on their own schedule as well, like we've done in some of the cities of Port Ritchie. One year, Port Ritchie needed a irrigation line put in in their park, and we had two plumbers volunteer, so they were thankful. We were able to get that in one day and also upgrade some things in the park and over at the Hacienda Hotel. So this will give you kind of an overlay of what's been going on for 20 years. There is a release form for every person that does it and also for the homeowner. So our part with y'all, if you have done in the past, is if code enforcement sees a widow lady with her head just grown up or complaining by neighbors, we've come and taken care of that. So just look to it, and if we can help, let us know. Now, the dates isn't on here, but it's September 25th, and usually we gather about 8:30 and come back about 1:00 and eat and kind of go over what we've done. Listen, thank you for your time. It's an honor to serve. God bless you, and thank you very much.
I see there are some people here that may not have gotten the opportunity to sign up for this particular portion. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment from the city? I mean, the residents, please? Your name and address.
My name is Audra Toth. I live at 9420 Cochise Lane. Last year, September, I was approached by an officer by the name of Bamcock, who refused to identify himself at the time of the incident when I was parked in front of Walmart waiting to pick someone up. He called me a bitch. I have filed multiple complaints, and this is the second meeting I've attended to complain about this incident, and I have gotten nowhere. Since then, I have been harassed and been called a liar, that I'm lying about the whole entire incident while I recorded it. I was also at Walmart on Saturday, and I don't know if I can do this or not, but I took these pictures, and I don't know...I doubt you people will be able to see it, but you can see people clearly parked exactly where I was. And there's a police officer there parked in the same spot I was parked the wrong way. And you can see that there are people loading groceries, getting in and out of their cars, and no one's being harassed. But I was, and I don't know why. I'd like to have complaints filed against their certificates.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, moving along. We have comments from our city manager. Mr. Duke?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. First of all, I'd like to introduce our new HR specialist, Iris Neves, has joined staff this week. And Iris, if you'd...she was nervous about what she might have to say. I said, "Just introduce yourself and whatever else."
Yes. My name is Iris Neves. Good evening to everyone here. Mi nombre es Iris Neves. Buenas tardes. I have joined the city of Port Ritchie as an HR specialist. About 20 years of HR experience. I worked for Hillsborough County for about 10. I am a New Jersey native, but I was born in Lansing, Michigan. That means I was there for maybe a year or so. Three adult children, four grandchildren, musician at heart. Do a monthly Bible study for the ladies that are in jail in Hillsborough County, which is really, really awesome. It gives...I have a heart to be able to serve the community. So it's an honor to be here with you, serving in a city that neighbors Spring Hill, where I live. So thank you for receiving me.
Thank you, Iris. We're really glad to have Iris on the job, and she's jumped right in and getting a lot of work done. Sal and I gave her a tall stack of stuff to work on, and she's jumped right into the middle of it. No new information on the Canal Dredge Project. Haven't heard anything from Treasury, and so it will depend on the county's advice. Several weeks ago, no news is good news. The public input period has ended, and I would assume that Treasury will send us that public input at the appropriate time. But that was...I had a question earlier this week from a member of the community. That public input was requested and driven by Treasury, not our public input. So they're collecting public input. Update on the Coty River Landing Project. The survey work started on the 6th of June. Ayers has advised it should be complete by the 6th of August, so you may see guys out there doing survey work. Duke Energy is working on lighting and leasing...a lighting plan and leasing options for us. As soon as the conceptual design is done, we'll sit down with Duke and go through some of their ideas and possibilities. Nick's Park options, including not having a boat ramp there, have been sent to the design team with Ayers, and so they will include that in their conceptual planning. FDOT is awaiting the conceptual plan to continue the discussion about altering the Coty intersection. So they're aware. Ayers has been in contact with them. They want to see Ayers' plans and pictures before they proceed any further. And Ayers will be including our newly acquired property in their conceptual plan. Couple of other staffing notes. Our part-time IT person, Christina Vasquez, started this week. I'll have her here hopefully in two weeks to get to know you. She'll be with us about 20 hours a week and has already jumped into lots of IT issues that we've been struggling with, waiting for her to get here. Public Works Administrative Assistant, Mary Kressman, started this week, and again, I hope to have her here in two weeks to be introduced. And our code enforcement employee will start in one week, we hope, possibly two. But we'll go...right now, we're using a contractor for that work, but it's just...it's clear that we need a...we need a Port Ritchie city employee to do that work, and so Charles will be starting with us here in a week or so, and hopefully in two weeks, I'll have him here to be introduced. Little update on our Hurricane Elsa efforts and outcomes. City staff did citywide inspection, looked at parks and infrastructure. Some debris, as you know, minimal damage. They did do...they had the parks closed for one day after the storm had passed, so they could do cleanup, make sure all the debris was out. Had multiple short-term street closings due to high water, and Public Works had to watch that. Water'd come up, they'd barricade the road, the water'd go back down, and they'd pull the barricades. So prior to the storm arrival, city crews were out. They were cleaning drainage ditches, they were cleaning swales, hauled off truckloads of trash and brush and so on, swept the parks to make sure we didn't have debris or, you know, try to reduce the debris possibility. Fire chief and myself attended multiple county emergency operations center update briefings through the time prior to the storm arriving, so appreciate chief taking care of that. Fire department had three units staffed for the 12 hours that the storm was in town, so to speak. Wanted to make sure that we had adequate vehicles anticipating additional calls. As it turns out, the storm maybe wasn't as much as the National Weather Service said it would be. We had no storm-related calls for service for fire and PD, but we were ready should those calls have come in. Want to thank Chief Robinson and Chief Polycastrey. They both pulled night watch the night of the storm, and Chief Robinson was a little groggy when I got in at 6:00, but appreciate him man in the ship overnight. I did brief the mayor at 6:00 a.m. that morning. He was anticipating being on a national news show. Since nothing really happened, they weren't particularly interested, I guess, and so the briefing at 6:00 didn't result in the mayor being on national TV at 7:00. We were all very disappointed. Waterfront Park, the FERDAP grant planning process is underway. Staff and I have a meeting tomorrow. We pushed it off several times today due to circumstances internal, but we're starting the planning process for what should we ask for? What do we want to plan for in Waterfront Park and grant funds? Once staff has put together a list, we'll bring that to you and get your input at your park. It should be your vision, but we'll put some ideas together and then have you direct us how you want that grant written. Amazingly, no questions from the CRA auditor in the last couple of weeks, unless something came in today. I think we've responded to everything we've been asked for, so no news is good news. I was invited to and attended the Pasco County EDC board meeting. Participated in my monthly meeting with the county manager. That typically is updates on county projects, and his information is always on his website as well. But I did have a lunch meeting with the new seaside property owners, and they aren't yet settled on what they want to do with the property but are open to ideas. And so we may have an opportunity to have input into that process, but they aren't yet decided how that's going to go. And per code, we have started quarterly department budget reviews. I think we're mostly wrapped up with those reviews. We may have one more to go, and so you'll start getting a quarterly department-level budget review document from me as we go forward. So that is our rule, and we'll follow that rule, and I'll start getting you quarterly reports. On a fairly somber note, I had sent out a notice earlier this week. One of our family members, team members, colleagues, Kim Hartley, is still in very critical condition. She's still in ICU, and we have staff with her family. The city family has been side-by-side with them. We will continue to do whatever we can to support them. Anything that they need, we've offered, you know, if you need a ride somewhere, if you need food, if you need just somebody to lean on their shoulder, we're there for you. So we continue that process. Keep Kim and her family and your thoughts and prayers. That's all I have. Stand for your questions, Madam Chairwoman.
I have no questions. Mr. Kinsella, do you have any questions for the city manager?
A couple of things. The code enforcement, is that a full-time position?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Going with the...our tropical storm, Hurricane Tropical Storm Elsa, we have lessons learned. At the hospital where I'm at, we took that opportunity to review it as...or look at it as a drill for us, preparation for possibly things to come. Has the city taken a look at our shortcomings and other areas that we can improve?
Yeah, we...I met with Chief Polycastrey, Chief Robinson, the day following, and because it was not as impactful, shall we say? But our preparation, to me, felt pretty good. We had people in place, both chiefs had their personnel lined out, we had an overnight plan. Obviously, had the water come up and it had been a more serious event, we may have found more cracks in our preparation and our response. But for a first run, it felt pretty good to me. We had an overnight watch, had people on duty. Public Works was out through the night checking streets, and so I don't know that we had any significant failures. In a previous job, we called this a hot wash. We would review everything that happened. So I didn't hear from staff that they had any particular concerns, but again, we weren't tested in a significant way because there was minimal damage, minimal water rise. But I'd be glad to put that together in a note if you'd like and get that back to you.
Thank you.
Mr. McClary?
I have nothing.
The public signed up. Mr. Mueller?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good? All right. Well, it's comments from the mayor and the city council. We have comments from the mayor and the city council. Do you guys have any other comments outside of what we've said with the city manager?
I do have one question. Ms. Sullivan mentioned that a paving of Old Post Road...can we check to see if that's in the developers' agreement, that the developer paves Old Post Road as part of the closeout?
Yes, of course. I know there was...we've had discussion among staff that there would be work to do. I don't know if that's in the agreement or not, but I'll look into that. Obviously, if there's work we need to do, we'll go do that, whether it's in the agreement or not.
Especially as they're closing out, I want to make sure if there's anything owed, especially something as significant as that, I want to make sure we stay on top of it. And I've heard actually numerous complaints regarding the noise at Avila Bay, but I understand anything coming from a vehicle on a public road does not fall within our ordinance. Is that...
The ordinance used to be within 25 feet per minute.
The initial...back in the day, it used to be 25 feet, and then it went 100 feet, and now it has to be a decibel...we have to have a decibel meter, but we don't have authority with the vehicles if they're riding down the road. The ordinance doesn't address that.
Is that an ordinance...is that...well, asking it a different way, is that something that can be addressed by council, or is that a state requirement?
You can change it. It's a state. It's...we had it in Hernando, and we had it, and you have it here. So it...I don't know if you can change that. Now, you have a county ordinance regarding noise complaints coming from businesses and residences, but it does not address a vehicle.
Can I comment on that? Can you hear me? There's...I'll look into this further, but there is a state statute specifically on noise from vehicles, and it has been changed. That's my understanding, making it more difficult to enforce, and I think that's a result of certain lawsuits that were made against it. There used to be, you know, mufflers, no mufflers, certain decibel levels. I'd have to check our own noise ordinance, but I think that any...that would be preempted by the state concerning motor vehicles and movement. But I'll check, but I'm pretty sure that would be our only alternative, would be whatever is allowed there. And I'll pull it out and send...
Yeah, if you look at it. If it is something...
Chief, do you know if there's still a decibel level on it? I really have looked at it in years. If you know, because I'll check it.
The only thing we have in the ordinance is specific, but then again, it's also ambiguous because it does state that if it's an issue for an individual, we can do something regarding that, but then again, it gives you specific decibels for the locations. So I think the ordinance itself needs to be looked at, reviewed, and...
No, I was asking you in the state ordinance. I'm talking about in the traffic code where they have the, you know, noise. I'll check it. I just didn't know.
Well, let's look at this from a different perspective. I know we're getting a ton of noise complaints, either from businesses, personals, cars, whatever. Is there a recommendation that can be made to adjust our current noise ordinance to better address some of the issues that people are coming to us with?
Oh, I understand the question very well. It's just that the state controls what drives on vehicles.
Yeah, and I understand that, you know, if the vehicles are under state purview and that's out of this...
It may be beyond our jurisdiction to enforce noise on streets. Okay? We can determine speed and everything, and they...the state also says how noisy certain vehicles can be, and I think they've changed it recently. So what I'm going to check is whether we're able to control the noise of vehicles, which is your only question, right?
Well, noise...well, I'll say noise. So noise from vehicles, noise from boats, noise from...
Well, we have a noise ordinance that affects other things. We have noise on boats. There's no airboats here. There's certain things like that. I can give you the...
Yeah.
Have you ever seen the noise ordinance? It's pretty expensive.
I have seen a noise ordinance, but I understand that there's a lot of questions. I just want to make sure we're perfectly clear as to what's addressable and not addressable. And if we have to adjust something, let's, as a council, address it so we don't...as best we can.
My gut reaction is you're not going to be able to change anything with regard to noise of vehicles, but I'll check. With everything else, it's a base level noise, okay? With boats, it's kind of open to...
Yeah, but the noise with a vehicle, wouldn't that be on a public street, not on public property? I mean, if the vehicle's sitting on...
That's correct. That's correct.
That's correct, and I'm just discussing on the street. Right, if somebody's making noise on the property, it'd be different. On the public street would be the noise. And I presume the noise coming out of Avila Bay isn't what they're doing in Avila Bay, it's when they come out the old boat, right?
Correct.
Okay, I have no further comments. Is there any comments from the public on this issue? Seeing none. We have comments from boards and committees. Ms. Rodriguez?
[coughs]
Okay. And we'll move on to our agenda. Our first agenda item is consent agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Okay. Our third agenda item is presentation a comprehensive annual financial report, and I'm going to turn that over to our authorities.
Yes, they should be on the phone. And so you have in your packet and also a separate copy of both the CRA CAFR and the City of Port Ritchie CAFR, and our auditors will present.
Hello, everybody. My name is Tom Smith. I am a director with EFPR Group. I led the engagement team for the audit of both the city and the CRA financial statements. So I just wanted to run you through a high-level summary of the financial statements and the summary of the audit. We issued both those financial statements on June 30th, so only a couple of weeks ago. Those financial statements and audit reports were reviewed with city's management as well as their accounting consultants. We issued clean, unmodified opinions on both those financial statements. As part of the financial statements, you are subject to what's called government auditing standards. That requires us to look at internal control in order to verify to you, the board, that there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies over your internal controls, as well as there's no findings in regards to laws, regulations, and contracts. We are glad to say that we did not come across any of these items that needed to be reported at the board level. Management provided us everything that we needed on a very timely basis, and we only had one audit adjustment. As a comparison to last year, there were seven adjustments that needed to be made after we received the preliminary numbers. So from the board level, this should give you comfort that the information you're getting throughout the year, the any type of treasury report or preliminary numbers, that the amounts are accurate. So you are looking at verified, you're looking at good, real-time numbers. As part of management, we, we were planning on starting the audit back in January, February. Unfortunately, due to a missed haze passing, we weren't able to start till April and really wrap up our fieldwork till May. Good financial position at the fund level, where you set your budget annually. There was an increase in the general fund, fund balance of $11,000, and that's really where you do most of the planning for the city. One area I would like to point out, because you set the budget at the beginning of the year, and then you really don't see the final actual numbers until the end of the year. So just to be able to have some comfort that the numbers you set at the beginning of the year with the budget are accurate. Your revenue did increase from, from the budget amount, so it was very accurate to that. And your expenditures increased by, only by $0.4 million due to strong budgetary controls. So you can see that the controls that have been set in place by the city are being followed. And lastly, the CRA's financial statements, which are new this year, where they have to have their own financial statement, the net position increased by half a million dollars to 1.5 million as of year on. So this city should be comfortable that they're in good financial position and that they have the proper financial management in place to monitor and take on the operations of everything. So that is a high-level audit summary of the financial statements as of September 30th, 2021. So I really want to turn it over to the board if they have any questions that, anything I can answer, or any questions you may have.
Mr. Consella, do you have any questions? Mr. McClary?
I have one question. In the letter, in the various letters, and I can't point my finger to them, for both the CRA and for the general fund, you had reference as to recommendations for improvements to see an appendix A. I believe it was what was referenced in the letter, but I did not see an appendix A. Is there any recommendations that are worth speaking to at this time?
At this time, we didn't come across a, any recommendations. We found pressing. A lot of that is due to a change in management, so we really want to be able to dig into that a little bit next year as we get to work with Rachel, the new finance director, a little bit more. So this year, we really, as part of COVID too, we want to make sure we get through the financial reporting standpoint of it. So we didn't come across any recommendations that we felt needed to be brought to the board.
So is the appendix A reference a miscue? Or is there a document that we should be looking for overall?
I am just seeing that now. The appendix A is a typo, I apologize for that.
Are you satisfied, Mr. McClary?
Yes.
Any comments from the public? Mr. Mueller?
Dave Mueller, 5439, Ludlone Drive. My review of, of the CRA, was there, was there any review of the allocations established for the transfers between our general fund and that CRA? I'm just wondering if that's something that was, was it looked at? Is this something that we need to give consideration to? And are the appropriate percentages, are they appropriate? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? All right. Then I assume that we are done with agenda item number three. Can we move on to agenda item number four?
Thank you for me, everybody. And if you have any other follow-up questions, please feel free to reach out to me at any time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number four, discussion to set budget workshop schedule. We're opening floor for discussion. Mr. Doot, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to make sure that as we schedule a workshop, that it fits with your schedules and we don't double up on something that you already have on your agenda. So Rachel and I are thinking sometime in the next week, week and a half, two weeks, we would be more than happy to host an initial budget workshop, look at the penny for Pasco, the capital improvement plan. Wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to look at your calendars. We'll follow your guidance.
Gentlemen, comments?
Last year, or last budgetary time, I thought we did Tuesdays, it was sequential Tuesdays, is that how we did it? I'm trying to remember off the top.
I do believe we did, if I'm correct.
Yeah, in between. I mean, I'm all for doing that again.
Okay. Please.
Counsel's edification with regard to a workshop, you just need a five-day notice, but you can set it at any time you want, so you may want to address that. You can do that, but we can fancy workshops at 6:30 or whatever.
I'd rather put it, the schedule together now, that way it can lock on.
I guess what I'm saying is, whatever time you want.
So how many do we have to do? Two?
Two would be sufficient.
Okay. Gentlemen, the 20th next week?
We can be ready next Tuesday. Going to look at Rachel, make sure she didn't say no. Yeah, next Tuesday would be comfortable for us.
And when would this have to be done by, from your perspective?
You mean the entire budgeting process or the workshop?
We need, we need two workshops. So we have one theoretically, the 20th. Then on the 27th, we have a council meeting.
With Newport Ritchie, right? I sent those regulations over.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll do the maximum mileage two weeks from now?
Yep.
Okay, so then you'll have a workshop before then?
And we wouldn't be conflicting with Newport Ritchie then, correct?
We can have the workshops at any time. It's the maximum mileage rate setting that gets.
Gotcha.
Got it. So what I'm saying to you is that's going to be two weeks from now, so you, you can have workshop before that. It might be more helpful to do that, you know?
Yeah, we'll have one workshop, then be able to set the mileage rate, and then, then the secondary workshop, and then we're on path for the hearings.
Okay, so are we in agreement that we do a workshop at, what, 7:00 on the 20th? Gentlemen?
I'm good. Earlier.
I'm okay with earlier. If you guys are okay with earlier, I just, you know, I can't speak for the other two gentlemen that are not here.
If they were here, they would have a voice, but they're not here.
All right. Mr. McClary, thank you.
I'm okay with 6:30 or?
6:30.
6:30.
6:30 probably works for all of us. Okay, and then our next workshop, our second workshop, would be on 3rd, also at 6:30, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Is that agreeable with staff?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So we're going to move on to item five on our agenda, police department impound surplus. This is the shortest list I've ever seen. You guys working?
Two items for your consideration, I believe. They're in your packet.
Guys, gotta get more aggressive.
Getting pretty empty back there.
You must have everything done. I mean, you know. Can I have a motion?
Motion to dispose of the vehicles as noted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. We'll move on to item six. Public Works Utility Surplus of Obsolete Non-Functioning Equipment. Mr. Doot, take.
Number of broken, non-functioning pieces of equipment that are taking up garage space.
I love we're cleaning out house so well. So do we have a motion? Any objection, any discussion?
Motion to approve the equipment from the Public Works Department as surplus and dispose of them by proper means determined by the city.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none, motion passes. And old business. Mr. Consella, do you have any old business?
The only thing I like to cover, it seems like every meeting comes up is Nick's Park. It's becoming a topic, and I would like to see this council to look further into, especially get the understanding as to what we can, can't do. I think that would help us. I don't know what our restrictions are, you know, with the, with that property and what we can do, can't do.
Just helpful, this council, you mean what the restrictions are there? Is that what you want to know? Okay, Mr. Doot, that's a relatively easy thing to have. I have a file on it. Super.
Okay, Mr. McClary?
I have nothing, thank you.
I have nothing. Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? I think we're going home.